Everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started. I call for order this budget committee meeting of the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors. And we find five. I'd like to welcome everyone who has joined us tonight, especially members of the Budget Committee who have joined us. Before we begin, I'd like to read a brief statement about the Budget Committee's role. Per local budget law and Oregon School Board Association guidance, for Budget Committee members, it is not the purpose of the Budget Committee to set staffing levels or manage programs. However, it is likely that both will be discussed during the community input and hearing portions of the budget development process. In effect, for preparation levels and rely on good creative efforts of administration to respond to input from the community while implementing the highest and best service for students possible with available resources to align with the strategic plan. Our first item on the agenda is the Budget Committee is to approve the proposed agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as printed.
It has been moved by Director Watson and Director Lopez to approve the Budget Committee meeting agenda. Is there any discussion? There any objection? Motion carries. Agenda item is the election of the Budget Committee Chair.
I move that Chair Pantelha be made the Chair of the Budget Committee for the school.
Thank you, Director Watson. To nominate myself. Question or objection? Motion carries. Our next agenda item is the reading of the budget message by.
Thank you. Dear Hillsborough School District Budget Committee Members and Peasants, in accordance with O R S two nine four three nine one, I submit to you that Hillsborough School District One J proposed two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget. Last year's budget message, I shared that we anticipated being able to maintain current service levels in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year with revenue level formula grants like success, student investment account, and early literacy, as well as the remaining S or three funds. However, our experience in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year was that we were significantly short of the revenue necessary to meet actual expenses. The first indications of this came in mid-May, two thousand twenty-four, when school districts across the state received the final state school fund reconciliation for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year and revised assumptions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Due to a decline in enrollment and revision to the state's average daily membership or A D M allocation, we received a negative state school fund adjustment for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year of more than $4 million, as well as revised assumptions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year of nearly $3 million. When approximately 25% of the district's expenditures are made each year, it also became clear that expenditures in twenty-three, twenty-four were higher than expected in some areas, due in large part to factors outside of our control, for example inflation, and the unknown impact of new legislation and associated costs, for example paid leave board. Because school districts are required to have balanced budgets each year, its burden was shifted to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Full impact of these prior year revenue and expenditure changes in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget was not clear until after September payroll was completed and October one enrollment numbers were in. At that time, HSD was facing a shortfall of at least 9.5 billion dollars. Number of actions were taken at the district level to mitigate the shortfall, including reducing department budgets, delaying bus purchases, freezing non-student contact hires, and reducing staff fix-it F T E, and so on. As we are still in the midst, we were still in the midst of negotiations with both our licensed and classified and P unions, there was hope that a reconfiguration of bargaining proposals could save some money, but in the end, it was not possible. Our settled contracts actually added to our twenty-four, twenty-five shortfall. Still, we were able to make the necessary reductions and realize the needed savings without materially impacting schools. We began our legislative advocacy efforts early in the fall in an attempt to ensure elected officials had information about school districts' financial needs prior to heading into the twenty, two thousand twenty-five legislative session. At that time, we were developing our stance, we, at the time we were developing our stance, we believed we could meet current service levels in the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium if the ultimate allocation to the state school fund were to be 11.3 billion dollars. This is the approximate amount districts were expecting after Governor Kotek's task force recommended changes to the statewide K-12 current service level calculation of just over 500 million dollars. Unfortunately, it was after we began confirming that 11.3 billion dollars would result in a flat budget for HSD, that the PERS Board released employer contribution rates for the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium, and we learned that our costs would go up approximately 6.5%. We also received more information about the amount of increase we could expect in other areas like our liability insurance and our utilities. Add to that the cost of our settled bargains, we soon realized we were looking at an increase to our expenses over the biennium of approximately 19%. At the time of this message, the legislature has not yet finalized the state's budget for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium. However, it appears as though the state school fund allocation will be approximately 11.36 billion dollars. This would represent an increase in revenue of approximately 11%, which is eight percentage points less than what we would need to break even. What this means for us is a shortfall of approximately 20 million dollars in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year alone. Because we are a people-intensive organization with nearly 85% of our costs related to staff, and because we took so much action at the operational level in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we simply have nowhere else to turn but to absorb an equivalent percentage of that shortfall by reducing staff positions. Those reductions will take place in all, in all staff classifications, including classified, licensed, supervisory, technical, and administrators. It is important to note that staffing reductions are sustainable over the biennium. That is, reducing staff now equates to savings in both the first and second years of the biennium. Any reductions that are made to operational expenses are not sustainable and will therefore need to be made again in the twenty-five, twenty-six, in twenty-five, twenty-six unless we receive additional revenue. The other uncertainty we face at this time is the possibility of federal-level reductions to education and other human services in Oregon. Currently, HSD receives approximately 19 to 20 million dollars per year in federal funds, most of which goes to the state of Oregon first and then is passed through to districts, approximately 12 million dollars for programs that support students with special needs, language learners, and students experiencing poverty, approximately 8 million dollars for school nutrition. What might not immediately come to mind is that if Medicaid or other non-education-related federal funding is, to states is reduced, we in Oregon will have to make decisions about what, if anything, we want to cover through reserve accounts or other funding sources at the state level. Those decisions could have an impact on school district funding. For now, we are building our budget at the 11.36 billion dollar state school fund level and planning for reductions of nearly 20 million dollars in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. There is still time to advocate for additional K-12 education funding, and we encourage our constituents to reach out to their elected officials and let them know the importance of education funding. We have a wealth of information on the Budget Matters page of our website, including a legislative advocacy packet with background information and advocacy-led templates in both English and Spanish. More money is allocated to K-12 schools, we will restore staffing and services that directly affect students first and foremost, and prepare to bolster our district's reserves in order to weather unpredictable budgetary situations in the future. We will keep you informed of developments along the way. Thank you, as always, for your continued partnership and support. Respectfully, Travis Reiman.
Thank you, Mr. Reiman. Next on the agenda is the proposed budget presentation with Scott and Jeff.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Scott Erickson, District Financial Officer, Jeff Jones, who's our Director of Business Services, is going to join me, and together, we're going to walk through a presentation that discusses the proposed document.
I get the opportunity to walk you guys through the budget workbook and just kind of go over a few of the sections, kind of like we did last year, but for anybody who's new. Over the last few years, we've made a concerted effort with our budget documents to be more transparent and with the meritorious budget award requirements, and we've now received the award, it'll be like three years now, as we continue to follow those guidelines and being transparent with the community. The document is broken out between the executive summary section, which will summarize information presented, and all the other three sections of the document. Kind of the budget message would be included, the highlights of the forecast as well. The next section is the organizational section, and that contains just general information. This ticket. Large section. The one that will contain the funds and descriptions of revenue and expenditures for our district. And then the next few slides, we're going to go over some of the technical aspects of the document, and then we'll discuss operational notes, outlooks, and assumptions. Slide is showing the trend of what our fund balance for the next three years in comparison to the last two years. And as we've been discussing, a part of that has to do with the large amount of capital project funds we still had in twenty-three, twenty-four, as that amount is decreasing as we spend. For the twenty-five, twenty-six year, and the general fund has about 11.5 million dollars, which is the 4% amount that we are, of the expenditures that we go for with, for our reserve. The special revenue fund has about 17.3 million in it, and the majority of that balance is actually for government funds or student funding funds. And that all gets incorporated with the special, special revenue funds. And another large amount that is included within there is the nutrition services funds. Money that they make from off sales and things like that can be carried over into the next year. And then, a million dollars. So this slide is showing the resource highlights. This is the first three digits for the fund code of our budget. Our primary spending comes out of the general fund, that's for all our operational costs. And the revenue sources, you see, makes up about 299.7 million dollars of our total budget, and most of the revenue for that comes from our state school fund allocation, our property taxes, and things like the county school fund. Second one is a special revenue fund, and that makes up about 82 million dollars of our budget. Now, this one has about four or five different sources that come in, so there's local sources of grants, 8 million. That would be things like the donations that we get, anything from the student body, Nike or Intel, those kind of corporations are all local sources that we receive. Intermediate makes up about 2.3 million, and those are things that come to us through the county. So Washington County or the city of Hillsborough are providing a grant that we utilize, that's where this would go as well. We get about 35.8 million from the state, and that includes programs like High School Success, the Student Investment Account, those are included within the state sources. And then our federal amount is about 21.1 million, and that's going to include stuff like I D A and Title I, and Nutrition Fund also makes up a large portion of that, about 8 million of it. And then we have our, and about 11.6 million of that number is going to be beginning fund balances for things that roll forward. Some grants are multiple-year, and we get all the money upfront, that funding will roll over as well as the donation funds that aren't used. The other major funds that we have would be the debt service fund, which is about 63 million dollars, and that amount is calculated based on payment schedules for our 2017 and 2020 general obligation bonds, our 2005 pension bond, and our 2015 pension bond. And then we have about 5.2 million dollars will be remaining to spend next year for our capital project funds as we spend down the bond dollars. The numbers would be the function, and the pie chart we have up here is just showing what the general fund allocation would be. So things like the 1,000 function would be for instructional services, and that amount is going to be about 173.6 million. That's for all the sources that go directly into the classroom to help students learn today. The 2,000s in the general fund, about 113.8 million, and that covers the support provided by the district or other, other services like counseling, administrative, all those kind of services come out of our 2,000 function. And 2,000 function is community services, and a lot of the money that we have coming out of that would be related to, that's 726.5, and that's where, 726,096, that one's a smaller amount, and that comes from some of our work with O S P. And we have about 1,000 dollars set aside for the 4,000 function as we don't do many capital projects, but in case we do, this way we don't have to try and do a supplemental budget in the future to be able to spend out of that. Most of the time, the 4,000s are included in the capital projects fund. The 5,000s that are listed up there are related to debt service, and debt service has its own fund. And then we have the 6,000s, and so we have 11.5 million set in contingency, and that's basically what our 4% fund balance will be. And then last here is the object code, and this kind of breaks out our different salaries, where, how we code benefits, services, and everything. One thing I wanted to note on this is that in prior years, equipment was capitalized at 5,000 dollars, but starting July 1, per the State Program Budgeting and Accounting Committee, it's going to change to 10,000 dollars that will capitalize on.
Jeff, so 2024, 2025 was a challenging budget year. We were realizing a deficit of just over 10 million in the general fund, as Superintendent mentioned, that chance will grow next year, I'll talk about that here in a moment. How we are proposing to address that is a combination of some savings activities that have been in place for some time this year and have yielded savings, as well as the use of the Internal Services Fund, which we'll talk about more in the supplemental in a moment and also tonight. Supplemental budget, this is a reminder, it's in the, not the Budget Committee, but we will talk about that because we want to have a full context of what we're looking at. The drivers behind the 10 million plus Superintendent talked about already a bit in his, in his upfront note, but it really is a combination of student decline, which is reducing revenue growth. Our internal estimates of student decline is that it's been running just a little over one, about 1.2% or so. However, I will note the demographers have a steeper decline in their forecast, it's running closer to 4% in their prediction over the coming years. Either way, that is a trend that we've mostly seen sustain now for several years, and we think it's probably going to continue maybe for another six to seven years. So we're having to adjust budgets accordingly to plan for that. The second area that happened is non-staffing costs, and we've talked about this in prior meetings with you, are significantly higher than our adopted estimates were for 2024 and 2025. I, I don't want to get into the specifics in a public meeting, but I just came out of a meeting with our insurer, we're looking at insurance increases that might be close to 20% next year and answer already this year. So we continue to see those run higher than traditionally. We've seen in the budget where we tend to budget for those things at around a 3% to 4% kind of estimate, they've been running higher than that. Consequently, we've been trying to drive savings to reduce the spending on those numbers, which is part of how we address the 10 million dollars this year. Bargaining outcomes, as noted, also exceeded the 2024, 2025 forecast, somewhat on the wage and salary component, but significantly on the purse component. So that was an area that was under forecast that contributed. All this to say, we do have a plan to address this through both the savings activities that we've undertaken this year, as well as use of the Internal Services Fund. That will require a supplemental budget, which I think we're going to talk about here in a couple of slides, but then really put before the board later this evening. As I indicated, these challenges actually grow a little bit for next year, so in our outlook, staff and operational adjustments, we need to eliminate almost 20 million dollars in general fund deficit to balance the budget. I will show you that proposal here momentarily. A couple assumptions, though, on this. This assumes no unforecasted reduction in federal funding, so that 20, 21 million dollars, at this point, we do not have good cause, although we're certainly aware of the context taking place externally, but we don't have any cause right now to make an adjustment for that, so we have not. We are not expecting any material legal settlements during the balance of the fiscal year for next year to give us a different outcome, so that could change, of course, if something happens. And we're going to maintain a 4% general fund imbalance. That is something I would like to bring back in future times to the board when we are in a better financial state, but for now, we've assumed just to maintain at the 4% level. We've also assumed the same number of school days, so those are our operating assumptions for next year.
Do we have questions as we go?
Yeah, however you want to do it.
The 4% any fund balance, we've talked about that several times over the course of just my time on the board, we've reduced it twice in order to minimize staff cuts. Don't love it being that low, I think Erica's, she should never be that low, as the other accounting person in the room. Guess like not being able to change that this time because of the, if not now, when? And is it next year, maybe? So with, with two, three-year agreements in place, we have some predictability that we may not have had before, some of our learning is more predictable. So with things becoming more predictable, is that thing we may discuss next year? Or is it like a five, 10-year horizon before we might be able to address that?
Yeah, but I think there's a couple possibilities, and the timing, I think, also, you know, decision by the board, but the two possibilities I see are, if we acquire new funding, new revenue sources that are unexpected, and assuming they're not restricted, that's a conversation potentially to have, that's unlikely.
You've seen that, like, I haven't seen that happen.
I don't know what Salem will do, you're closer than I am to that, but if that were to happen, that would be one, one path. The second path is, of course, we can look at continuing to find efficiencies and repurpose or reprioritize. That's why it's a struggle right now, because we're in such a challenging time. I had my, you know, financial officer magic wand, though, this would be a high priority for me, because I do believe 4% is too low for the size, and that we ought to try to build it up for stability for the district over time. If these kinds of situations we're seeing this year and next year may continue.
Sorry, it's, it's sort of twofold, right? It's one, dancing on the head of a pen with a budget our size, trying to land on this is not super easy to do for the course of the year, and also, by us not increasing it back, it doesn't give future boards the opportunity to lower it back to four in a time of crisis when we need to keep staff in buildings, which is what we've done before. The previous two times, we've reduced from five to 4.5. In order to keep more caring adults in the building, and I don't love taking that off the table for all future boards. Plus also, I think it's not okay.
So there is another thought I want to inject in here. I'm really concerned about our discomfort with that number. It's changed irreversibly. It's kind of, there is great discomfort that we all have, but the reality is, things really did change. The birth rate, the population that is declining at the rate that it is, is unprecedented for us. We, we have really enjoyed some really good times, and we have enjoyed being on top of our game, we were land bank, we, we did everything we were supposed to do. But I guess what I'm saying is, I get it, if you're an accountant, that 4% number makes you feel uncomfortable, but this is the reality that we're in right now, and we may not be able to get past that, and I don't want to see us put ourselves in a further situation where we feel like, well, we've never done that before, we've never been here before either. So I just want to make sure that we're, that we're, I don't know, does it, does it make sense? I'm, I'm concerned that we're using a past standard to deal with what's happening today, and we may.
The 4% standard or what standard?
Well, because everybody's like, well, that 4%, we messed with the number before, we were right around 6% when everything was happy and glorious, and now we're back down to 4% and we're panting. I'm thinking, yeah, but we may not be able to get back up to that 6% again. I just want to make sure that we're.
I don't remember a happy, glorious time for our funding picture, but.
Yeah.
I think we've been underfunded for 15 or more years. That's got Jeff 15, 18 years you've been underfunded? Yeah.
Well, that's another part, I mean, and we're underfunded. How are we ever going to get back up to?
Too many times hear me say, like, focusing on doing the bare minimum, current service level.
Exactly.
And, and the governor finally admitting that it's a flawed number, flawed approach to that number, and tries or something about it, and so like, we spent 18 years trying to just do something, minimum we could do to keep doing what we did last year, but it's sort of just, yeah.
And now we might not even be able to?
Right.
And I think that's, maybe that's the reality in progress, that we may not be able to do even comfort. This is just a bad time.
What's that?
Scott and I have discussed also just ways to incrementally bolster our reserves, and. But we could, basically, any new stream of revenue, we tax ourselves, we put it in a, in a bank with eyes wide open, and we. So we have had this conversation, and I appreciate Scott's fresh perspective on what we're dealing with. He hasn't been here for the last 22 years of hard times. He came here to HSD as. Possibly that we, I've never known the times of plenty that we're telling the story about, but I think it would be responsible stewardship for us to look at how to bolster our reserves, especially given the instability streams and the economy of the state. So a lot of folks right now are anticipating the revenue forecast for the state of Oregon with pessimism, so I think we need to hold tight on this conversation for now, and I appreciate Scott, the way that you're characterizing it as a goal.
Absolutely. I, I do appreciate having a conversation.
Yeah. It's important.
Can you help fund this? Oh, Chris, yeah, please, online, sorry. Thanks.
Is it my turn?
Yeah, it is, go ahead, sorry. Is that Christina?
No, no, no worries, no worries. I, I just wanted to, to comment about the 4% number. I mean, the reserve level has always been something that's concerned me, it's concerned me for a long time. I think one of the things we need to think of the reserve as, it's a tool, is a tool to have. I totally agree that at some point, we need to get to a point where there are incremental increases. I'm not saying that those need to be huge and dramatic, obviously, if we had that type of money, we probably wouldn't be putting all of those huge and dramatic amounts toward the reserve, but I do feel like even putting small amounts can really, really help you. It can help the district, and in this environment where things are just way out of whack and we have a lot of uncertainty, I think that is a good approach. I also understand that, that, again, it's a tool, it's a tool that's there if we need it. So I don't think it's one of those things that we should always just say, you know, it should always be 4%, we're never going to go lower, we should never quite make that determination. I think it's good to have a goal set, like, eventually, we want to get to 5%, or eventually, we want to get to. Like, eventually, we want to get to 5% or eventually, we want to get to X or Y or Z. And just remembering that that reserve is there for a reason, for situations like this or even worse situations. So I think it's really healthy to have the conversation and also just to recognize that 4%, even that 4% number, it's low. I wish I could say it wasn't, but it is. But it's, at least we have a 4%. At least it's there for us, because other future, you know, other past boards made sure that we had something. So just wanted to put that out there.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Well put, Christine. Okay. Okay, let me discuss a little bit then what comprises the... Talking about this in his letter upfront, but let me start with kind of the right side, if you will. So the 16.7 million and the 3.1 million are roughly proportional. We do, about 84% of our costs are in people. They're in staffing-related costs, and therefore, you see in this reduction chart, it's about 85% at the top number, and it's about 15% in operations and maintenance. Also worth noting that for this 19.9 million, 16.7 million of this is sustaining, because staff reductions are going forward. Whereas the operations and maintenance number, you see there at 3.1 million, that is a one-time number. And if nothing changed, as I like to say, ceteris paribus, the economic term, if everything stayed the same, we probably have to revisit that number again in the second year of the biennium, because that won't carry forward. For the staffing reductions themselves, they break down as follows. The license reductions, it's about 67 full-time equivalent. The approach that we used on this is that we really looked at what are the ways in which we can best support kids? Not to say that any of these reductions don't have an impact, because of course they do, but we did try to prioritize the experience of kids when we looked at where some of these reductions could be made. So you'll see, for example, with the staffing ratios there, and just a reminder, these are averages. So it's always possible that any given classroom, let's say, in 1 through 6, 28 is the average. It could have 27 or 29, or, you know, there's a range on these. We tried to hold to these ratios, and we also tried to follow the overall strategic plan that the board has set forth when we started stepping through that filter as we proceeded. So 31 of them were in classrooms, and 36 of them were non-classroom-related FTE in the license area. For the classifieds, there's a bit of finance calculation here, and I just want to explain what I mean by that. So you'll see it's 53 department-based FTE, so we've weighted things outside of the schools in the department side of things, and there's 24 FTE proposed cuts in the school base. A lot of these are hours that summate to a full-time equivalent, right? So these are not necessarily humans, is the first thing I should say. There could be cases where it is an eight-hour person that's impacted, but there could be other cases where, you know, an hour or two hours is taken off multiple people's schedules. So just keep in mind that I have to look at things with a full-time equivalent, and that's how I calculate things, but this doesn't necessarily immediately translate to humans. And then lastly, there were five FTEs in the supervisory tech and administrative space. It is technically, it is generally true, though, for licensed and supervisory tech and administrative, the FTEs do generally speaking equate to a person, just to close on that. I don't know if anyone else wants to say. There are a lot of folks in cabinet involved in the process. We did add, sorry, I missed the one work calendar. This is a non-student contact day, so we have one work calendar reduction in place across a couple of the calendars, and that was a contributor as well.
Actually, I do have a question for you to ask. Roger, can you tell me what the reality, in my generic understanding, when we say, with the numbers that he's given, with potential reduction for licensed and classified staff, and then to say 10% reduction to the department budget? What does that, what is department budget versus the actual staff that make up that department? And these are humans that still need support?
Okay, so staffing reductions are part of the human. And then the operations department budget is the budget we're out. So as to the overseas or the PCC, we get the allocated amount, I just kind of think that it's $100,000. I'm only going to get $90,000 extra from the RUTD and so much material.
Okay, so that's what I was looking for, the example.
Side of it, the staffing is the, so these are the things.
So with less professional development, go ahead, Brooke.
Actually, the other piece about those two is that that also is a reduction in some of our contracts that are within our department. We look at how to best support the health of our students. And some of our department reductions, we also have to rethink some of our partnerships supporting students in a different way. So 10% reductions are definitely the thing, but also our contracts as well. And so I think when we think of the overall student experience, the experience pretty much might go back to our core buckets that we think about in all around the learning, in class size, and the health and safety of students, and the personal programming. And some of those pieces, though, are the contrast, that we also have to think into account and how to be patient services, support our students, and the reduction of staff. So that will involve our department budgets as well, and in the staff that supports them. So that's, I thought it here, the stuff.
I'll just add one thing to the, although you see there 5% reduction to school budgets and 10% reduction to department budgets, and as Brooke just said, both are important. However, it is also the case that that 10% reduction to department budgets is about 10 times the amount of money as the 5% reduction to school budgets. So we did try to continue to protect classroom experience. A lot of those department budgets are in departments like mine, or Jordan's, or, you know, Tech, or business offices, transportation. Yeah, they're, you know, we think they're so important, but they're not classroom impacting, so we prioritized cuts there as much as we could versus classrooms.
So we're looking at a fine combination of classroom impact, non-classroom impact, plus the school, the local, I mean, the school building, because everybody has a budget, and then the department budget for in each, every one of those schools.
Central office functions and transportation facilities.
Got it. I'm just trying to understand how in the world we're going to... In my head, all I could think of was, if this is what it is for us, what is it for the public? Not that I give a care about 40.
We do care about 40. They're talking about it tonight. They're talking about this.
Okay, so-
They're a little bit more than-
Technically, I do care. But my point is, I can't imagine this number works. I mean, the teachers are telling us, we got dysregulated kids, we got all things going on in the classroom, and now we're talking about, oh, I have to take 31 of you away, which means that that number is going to go up. The 26 to 1, that number, that's going to go up. The 28 to 1, that's going to go up too, and so is the 30.
That is actually a major difference.
So that's what we're going to increase to?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I feel better.
Historically, too, I'd add, we've done this before. We've had a few good years of finance, from the finance side. There were bad years from global pandemic. There were better years based on funding, where we weren't in this cuts mode, but as like Mark was talking about, we've been in this mode before. So the conversation on Monday was, how do we create clarity around what the reduction in services looks like? How does that look for technology services when my Chromebook breaks? How does it look for when principals are putting together their FTE into classroom configurations? And so that's the process we're in right now.
It makes sense. Thank you for, because that brings it, if you will, to help me understand what the actual 10% is and what the actual 5% is in all of those folks. And by the way, when we say classified reduction, thank you for pointing out that that was hours, not exactly people, but even if you consider hours, that's probably still more than 25 people. With more than 25 people in reduction for classified staff. I just classify staff, we determine it less. How, that determination, I know we've done it before, I'm just trying to understand how we do it now.
Right, now we're in a process of figuring out, some of this staffing reduction would have happened based on our dropping enrollment, and now it's happening because of our budget deficit as well. But we go through a process for our contract with, for, how many of the positions we can fill based on attrition. So if people retire or take a job somewhere else, we naturally have, and so with, for example, licensed staff right now, we have to figure out if folks based on seniority bump down the ranks, like, how many actual reduction in force would we have in licensed classifications? And then we do the same thing with, as our principals do their staffing workbook, where is the bumping happening with classified employees? And then how many actual reductions of positions are we talking about versus placing folks in open positions because of natural attrition? And so there was a moment in time where we had a little bit of optimism that our cuts would be almost equivalent to our natural attrition. We're at a point now where we're pessimistic about that. We actually have between 10 and 20, for example, staff in the licensed ranks for whom, right now, we're considering a reduction in force, and they would get a notice, like, you're part of a RIF process. And we do that through our contracts. We do it in partnership with our HEA partners and HR office, and we communicate, here's how the process is put out. And right now, we're in the middle of it, because we come up with calculations like this, principals get the information, make it happen in real life, we come back and we reconcile all that FTE, and then we go into a process in the spring with set deadlines for notifying folks of their assignments, notifying folks if there are any who might not be placed yet. We also notify them that they would be, have first dibs back on that job if it came back. And so with the resolution of the legislative session, we'll know our finances better than we do now. And so it could be that we go through with these cuts, and in the 11th hour, we get money, and somebody is called back to that job where they had just formally had one. So that's what's scary about this for real humans in HSD is, we're creating a budget based on our best information right now, and then we go all the way through the circumstances of the spring, and the legislative session has been known to go on into June, and so we'll be making decisions up until the last point. We do that with clarity of communication, and we do it with humanity, and so that's the situation that will get real for folks here in May.
Only really one more sentence, so I think it's probably okay to keep that. Right? 36 non-class, is that like TOSSAs? Is that what is, what does non-classified FTE mean in the real world?
Yeah, that could be common.
Okay, yeah. And not, not to wrap up and be entirely gloom and doom, right? There is, it moved past the deadline, the bill to increase the special education cap comes with funding. So we're, but anybody remember the last time we actually had to do a RIF here, 20 years? It's been a long time, right? Oh, you know. Why? Oh, with the 15, with the number of days that came with the revenue? It's 22 years. So we've been able to manage this even through some pretty hard, the hard times of 2008, without having to do that. So feels like we're, so if, I know legislators have asked many districts, where does 11.36 lead you? And that's the governor's proposed, and two years ago, the legislature funded it higher than the governor's proposed, right? So I don't know that we need to, I think building around 11.36 is the right thing to do, but it may be higher than that. And I think we should not assume that legislative advocacy is over on that front. I think making sure that all the people who represent us and represent places nearby have this slide will be important as they consider what those final numbers will be. I think we need to, nothing will be, it's going to be hard to get motion off of the 11.36, the reality of the world, the reality, off the 11.36 number until the budget forecast in May. But making sure that everybody who represents us and places nearby have this slide and understand what 11.36 means to us, that's important. And then after that forecast, we can even ratchet up advocacy even more. And then with a cap being raised from 11 to 15, that's 8 million, 4 million a year for us? I don't know what the, I can't remember, is it two separate bills to do the high cost disability? Do they both move? I think they both move. So planning on this is the right thing to do, I think we're doing the right things. But I also don't want us to leave with an entire picture of, we are, we have no influence over them. I think we still do. We don't, we're not lobbyists, we are the lobbyists. We need to make sure our voice is heard, and that, you know, it's just a straight fact, this is what 11.36 means to us. If the funding for the increased bed cap comes through, that could be $4 million annually, somewhere between 40, if I've had the number in our advocacy document, it's somewhere in there.
Managing a different issue.
Yeah, we're probably late downstairs, but I think this is probably more important. So prepare for the worst, hope for the best, a little, right?
But this was still a valid conversation to have. And we need to be, I know Becca's already on it, but we need to be figuring out how we can sell our community, because this is the same community that is expecting us to deliver all this new curriculum. And, oh, by the way, do not forget, the very people who may be impacted by this are the very people that you were trying to bring in, because we needed more diversity, and we needed the teachers to represent the kids. And so those new teachers are now going to go away. That is, yeah.
At least three of the board members currently will continue to be here after July 1st, maybe some more of us. It may be, this may be enough of a catalyst to convince our community that we should have a levy. Right, I don't know. We have neighbors that are able to minimize some of the impacts of this by having multiple levies, not even just one. We haven't had any, we haven't even tried for any. We didn't think they would pass, but maybe. I think we do have to be aware of the capital bond situation that's coming up as well, which we probably still need to do that when that one comes up. So it'd be asking our community for more, which is hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Getting back what they are.
Okay, anything else on this slide? I want to very briefly talk about the supplemental, because even though, as I said, the committee here won't vote on this, the board will later, so real quick, Jeff, can you give us a?
It's per the requirement from our audit, to bring a supplemental budget if needed to this meeting, to be in compliance with the finding that we had a couple of years ago. And so just a reminder here, to adjust the appropriate, so we have to do a supplemental budget if there's more than 10% between major funds and functions being moved. It requires a public notice, but this year, we had multiple funds, what we need items. One, as we're looking to move the Internal Service Fund balance over to the General Fund to help support this year, consider what's unappropriated last year. Unappropriated isn't actually allowed, so we can't do that without a supplemental budget. So we need to move that into a contingency fund to be able to actually transfer over to our General Fund. So that's a part of this as well, as you're correcting from the fund balances for the General Fund, Special Revenue Fund, and the Capital Projects Fund to equal what the audited numbers were for last year.
The one thing I'll just add real quick, sorry, Drifter. I know that maybe Hillsborough has done a lot of supplementals, I think there was one done last year. I would like to just offer to the board, I think this is not only required in some cases, but also it's a good way for us- cases, but also it's a good way for us to just drive better accuracy across the fund balances. So I would expect you to. So I would expect you to, to see these at least once a year because my, my perspective is when I see a significant change or whatever, I would rather bring your supplemental so you're working off the best set of numbers I have at the time, not, not for every small change, but when I see anything significant like we had this year. And so in the future, we plan to probably use these with some frequently. And it doesn't mean we're doing a terrible job or we were wrong. New information, and we're trying to be more accurate with our focus, as well as follow the law, obviously, on appropriation changes. Sorry, Dr. Thomas, you were going to say something?
No, no, I was thinking that, I don't know that we had, when is the last time we had a supplemental budget? I don't know if it was during.
Last year, that was the first one.
That was the audit anomaly, we.
Yes, yes, yes.
We had a three day forward.
So I guess my question is.
First one we had in a while.
So, but it doesn't require any action on us? I know there's no budget committee action, but is there? Okay, we do have to take that.
Good comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to, actually, I mean, I, I take supplemental budgets as a very different thing. I think they're a great aspect for transparency in terms of what's going on. So I don't see more, I mean, obviously supplemental budgets do take, do take time, they take effort, you have to follow local budget law and everything like that, but, but I actually think that is a good thing, that, that you have that transparency not only for the board, but also for the public, so.
Thank you for that. You said it better than I did, but that was the spirit of my comment, right?
Thank you, Christine.
Okay, we will, so key upcoming dates, obviously, June 17th is when we will have our budget hearing, adoption, make any further preparations if needed, and declare levy will be July 1st. I think that takes us to the video.
Yeah, we got one more thing to share with you. First, I want to commend Scott and Jeff for all the preparation that went into this, and our whole cabinet group who've been working for a presentation. A lot of information all at once, thank you for the conversation. We also feel like we have a big responsibility to communicate this with our school community. And so tonight, we're going to publish a video that is an explainer for folks who want to know what's happening with our school budgets, even though we don't know all the details about how the story ends in June, where we are so that we can be transparent and clear about it. We have the responsibility of telling the truth in times of plenty and in times of scarcity, and we're going to do that. So we wanted to share tonight the explainer video. It's good to watch Scott and me struggle through this video for six minutes, but please bear with us, we did our best. And some folks would say, who's going to listen to six minutes of this? There are folks out there who want an explanation of this, and for them, we hope that this suffices. There's going to be folks who want to know more, and there'll be folks who say, we don't want to listen to these guys talk and turn it off. But in, in an effort to be clear communicators and to be good stewards of our resources and supporters of our school community and understanding who we are and what we're doing, this is a thing that we wanted to share with the board tonight.
Say that downstairs.
Which part? Well, we'll only screen the video once.
Hi, I'm Travis Reiman, Superintendent of the Hillsborough School District. I want to thank the Hillsborough School District community for your continued support and commitment to our students and schools. We are committed to being responsible stewards of the resources entrusted to us, and that includes being open about the financial realities we face. Unfortunately, like many districts, we are facing budget challenges that will require difficult reductions. As we are approaching this process thoughtfully, we want to share information about our budget development process with you for the 2025-2026 school year. We have three goals for this video. One, provide transparency around our budget situation. Two, share our anticipated budget shortfall and how it will be managed. And three, collect questions and feedback from you so we can get you the answers you need to feel well informed.
Hi, I'm Scott Harrison, our district financial officer. School districts in Oregon get a majority of their money from the state, and the state determines its budget for schools and other agencies during the full legislative session in odd-numbered years. The state creates its budget every two years. We call that a biennium. So the budget we're talking about now is for the 2025 to 2027 biennium. Over the last 20 years, funding for K-12 education has roughly doubled, from 4.9 billion in the 03-05 biennium to 10.2 billion in the 23-25 biennium. The state has added some extra funding over the years, like the High School Success Fund, the Student Success Act, and the Early Literacy Grant. However, the needs of our students, the services we are asked to provide, and therefore our costs, have grown at a faster rate. And even with these additional sources of funding, expenses are outpacing our revenues. To fund schools, the state calculates what is called current service level, or CSL. Basically, CSL is the amount of money the state estimates we need to provide the same level of services in future years that we're providing today, things like school staff, curriculum, and utilities. School districts haven't always agreed with how the state calculates CSL. To address those concerns, in the summer of 2024, Governor Kotek ordered the state to recalculate it to make it more accurate. However, after that recalculation was completed, school districts learned about increased PRS employer rates for the next biennium that were far greater than anticipated. In addition, the Hillsborough School District, along with others around the state, settled contracts with employee unions that outpaced the rate of increase being considered by the legislature. Add to that declining enrollment, increases to the cost of utilities, liability insurance, and other costs of doing business, as well as expenses related to a variety of unfunded mandates, and we're seeing districts around us, as well as ourselves, preparing for significant shortfalls in the next biennium. If we take the governor's proposed K-12 budget of $11.36 billion, this equates to a funding increase over the biennium of 11.4%. Because state school fund dollars are delivered to schools 49% in the first year and 51% in the second year of the biennium, this means our revenues will increase by approximately 5% in 2025 to 2026. We estimate our expenses over the same timeframe to increase by more than 9%. This gap between revenue and expenses would equate to an estimated $20 million budget shortfall for HSD in the 25-26 school year if we didn't take any additional action.
Again, it's important to note that this is not just a Hillsborough School District problem. Most districts across the state are facing significant shortfalls, even those with additional sources of funding like local option levies and large ending fund balances. We always anchor to our core values, research-based best practices, and input from the community when we make tough budget decisions. We already went through a difficult process of prioritization when we determined how we would reduce services and staffing as pandemic relief funding ended. We also went through extensive feedback gathering for our integrated guidance and strategic planning processes, which helped us determine how to manage this additional $20 million reduction. We acknowledge that this news is difficult and that reductions may and will impact our classrooms, our staff, and our families. Because we are a people-centered organization and approximately 84% of our costs are connected to staff, our approach to managing the shortfall focuses primarily on staff reductions. Staff reductions are also considered sustainable because they save us money in both years of the biennium, whereas operational reductions are typically one-time savings that do not carry forward from one year to the next. We understand these reductions will significantly impact students, staff, and families, with potential changes including higher class sizes, longer wait times for services, transportation changes, and fewer resources for staff and students. However, we did our best to protect the student experience, preserve programs, maintain safe schools, and ensure system efficiency. What you will not see are wholesale reductions to music, athletics, career and technical programming, and other offerings that engage students in their education. Our sincerest hope is that additional money will be allocated to K-12 education by the legislature, whether that's through an increase to the state school fund and/or increased funding for things like special education and summer programs. We also welcome actions that would reduce our expenses. There is still time for you to advocate with your elected officials. Find resources and legislator contact information on the Budget Matters page of our website. If you have questions or feedback for us to consider, please take a moment to complete this brief form. We will add questions and answers to our website for quick reference. We hope this video has been useful by, one, providing budget transparency, two, explaining the budget shortfall and our management plan, and, three, showing how to submit your questions and feedback. Thank you for your attention and advocacy. We remain deeply grateful for your partnership, and we'll continue to navigate this together with transparency and care.
I'll just, I'll just hit that again as we have these, very good, excellent. As we have these conversations outside this room, we are not alone. It is, Portland, Portland's doing this exact same thing right now. They're a little bit bigger than twice the size of us. And we're looking at just under 20 million, they're looking at just over 40 million. So it's, 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 at least 35% of the state is having, 35 of the ones that, probably more like 55% of the 97 are having the same conversation. So as you have these conversations outside this room, realize the context of nobody's picking on Hillsborough, it's a statewide problem, needs to be solved in a statewide way. So that's just my, my encouragement is contextualize that in your conversations outside this room that we're not alone here.
Interesting, I'll say this, and there was a reporter for the Oregonian who is asking candidates about the budget and potential budget deficit. And I can tell you that I redirected his question for him to understand that this is not only Hillsborough, this is not just HSD, this is everybody. And in fact, if you look at the number, the, the population and the student population in the state have gone down significantly, over 45,000 students across the state. This is huge, so it's not just us. So I, I would suggest everybody redirect the conversation. This is not, it's, it's not a personal vendetta, this is life.
And the closing story of the video is right, we're not done.
Yeah, we're not done, yeah.
Any other questions from my four fellow board members? Oh, okay, we will move right to our next agenda item, which is public input. Rose and Beth, do we have anybody? Nope? Good, okay. Our next agenda item is an action item. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that the Budget Committee adopts the proposed budget document.
Has been moved by Director Watson and by Director Thomas to adopt as a proposed budget document. Is there any question? Rose, can you get a roll call, please?
Yeah, just to confirm with the Budget Committee members. Okay. Christine Adams Lambert? Sorry. Dustin Rose? Gabby Vega? Deanne Kim?
Hi.
Erica Lopez?
Hi.
Patrick McGuire?
Hi.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Tony Porter?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye.
You guys talked over.
Aye.
Dustin Rose? And Gabby Vega? Would you like to vote?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Dustin, I can't take a, a vote by, that's called vote by proxy, so I need to hear your vote. I apologize. Or I can, I can, I can see a wave, I can see your voice, mouth move, but I can't take a, a vote by proxy.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Motion carries. Our last agenda item of the Budget Committee is to review the next steps.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did that earlier, but, in June, we'll come back. Milestone will implement in July 1st.
Thank you. We will now recess the Budget Committee meeting at 7:12 and begin the regular session downstairs in the boardroom. Thank you for the Budget Committee members.
The Hillsborough School District, one J Board of Directors' regular session is now in order. It will begin like we always do with a flag salute. The flag is in the corner by the window. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I will be reading the Hillsborough School District land acknowledgement. As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district's service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Itfolyte Indigenous Peoples' lands we now call Washington County and the State of Oregon. We honor, we honor the indigenous peoples whose traditional and ancestral homelands we stand on the Twalatin, Kalapuya, Kalamet, Klakamas, Tumwara, Moala, Bandes of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Columbia River. In remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native First Peoples' community living in the metro area, which includes over 400 tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history and working with our local tribes in partnership. We will now move on to proclamations. Our first proclamation is the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month proclamation read by student representative Cal.
All right. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that Asian American and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Oregon since its earliest days, contributing to the state's rich history, economy, and culture. HSD knows that Asian American and Pacific Islanders have helped advance our community's prosperity, their contributions to all fields of education, business, the arts, economic development, science, and technology, among others. HSD recognizes that Asian American and Pacific Islander history is marked by a struggle for freedom, equity, and justice, prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. HSD understands that the vibrant history and diverse cultures of Oregon's Asian American and Pacific Islanders are here to be honored as a central part to our state's story and shared across all Oregon community. HSD celebrates that the month of May is nationally recognized as a time to celebrate contributions of Asian American and Pacific Islanders to our society and collective history. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 to be Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of the Asian Amer, of Asian American and Pacific Islanders to the development and prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Cal. Our next proclamation is the National School Nurses Day proclamation read by student representative Faith.
The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that School Nurses Act is a liaison to the school, community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of students' health. The Hillsborough School District knows that students today face complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school, and we appreciate the role that school nurses play in the lives of students. HSD recognizes that school nurses have served as a critical role in improving student health and ensuring students' academic support or success for more than 100 years. HSD understands that school nurses are the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for students every day. HSD offers gratitude for school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn. The Board of Education of the HSE do hereby proclaim do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 7, 2025, to be National School Nurses Day. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of school nurses to the development of prosperity in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Abe. Next, we will have our Teacher Appreciation Week proclamation read by Director Watson.
The Hillsborough School District celebrates teachers who would mold future community members through guidance and education. The Hillsborough School District honors teachers who are consistently learning so they can adapt to ever-changing needs of a diverse population in order to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams that reach beyond the limits of their present circumstances. The Hillsborough School District thanks teachers who contribute to the growth of our district, city, state, and nation by providing high-quality equitable education to all students. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling, and coaching students. The Hillsborough School District salutes teachers in their work to inspire students to discover endless possibilities for success. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of May 9, May 5 to May 9, 2025, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of teachers to the development of prosperity of our students and community.
Thank you, Director Watson. Our last proclamation is the Jewish American Heritage Month proclamation read by Student Representative Gwen.
The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that Jewish American Heritage Month was established in 2008 by President George W. Bush to honor the contributions and achievements of Jewish Americans and to educate all Americans. HSD celebrates the resilience, perseverance, and enduring contributions of Jewish Americans whose rich history continues to shape and strengthen our communities. HSD honors the legacy of Jewish Americans whose enduring commitment to justice, equity, and community have helped shape a more inclusive and vibrant society. HSD recognizes the resilience of Jewish Americans whose advocacy and leadership have advanced progress and enriched the fabric of our nation. The Board of Directors of HSD do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 to be Jewish Car, Jewish American Heritage Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of Jewish Americans to the development of prosperity of our community.
Thank you, Juan. Our next agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second. It has been moved by Director Warren and seconded by Director Lopez to approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Motion carries. Our next agenda i, item is audience time. Is there a, uh, audience section? No? Our next agenda item is to approve the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It has been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Watson to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Motion carries. Our next agenda item is the financial report with District Financial Officer Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Um, the only item I wanted to call your attention to this month is we did receive at Liberty High School a $14,000, $14,190 donation from the Intel Volunteer Matching Grant Program. I'm happy to take any other questions aboard us.
Our next agenda item is to discuss the 2025-2026 board meeting dates with Superintendent Travis Reiman.
How the truth of Rose Roman.
Hi. These are just the regularly scheduled board meeting dates, no deviation from our regular schedule. Um, if you have any questions, please let me know. We will be orientating some new board members in July. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Would anyone like to? Oh, our next is, uh, action items. Um, would anyone like to make a? No, we have to go. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the annual revisions at the Hillsborough School District Drug, Alcohol, and Tobacco Prevention Plan.
It has been moved by Director Kim, seconded by Director Thomas, that the Board of Directors approve the annual revisions of the Hillsborough School District Drug, Alcohol, and Tobacco Prevention Plan. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Director Warren?
Yes, I have a question. And Brooke, if you have to get back to me on this, no problem whatsoever. I just didn't get a chance to get it out. But what, um, do we have metrics or anything that shows the effectiveness of these programs? The things that we're changing? Why are we changing? That's, that's the gist of it.
Director Warren, we do have those metrics. So if you also want to give me a specific list, I'd be more than happy to share those with you and get back to you in a, in a response via email. But yes, we, we do keep those. I think it's important for us to see the growth over time, especially when we look at community partnerships and the impact of those partnerships. When we look at the effectiveness of the work that we're doing directly with students and the investments that we're making with our staff and, and students. So if you want to let me know some of those specifics, I'd be more than happy to look those up for you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
Just, just to add on to that, Brooke, and maybe, maybe with the email to put that in the board update as well, so the rest of the board has access to that.
And thank you to you and your team for putting that together. Extensive report we had last time. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Our next agenda item is the surplus property resolution. Saidah and Scott, do you have anything you'd like to add here?
Um, yeah. So, um, our ask is that you review the surplus property resolution. And essentially, what that affords us is the opportunity to engage with our real estate agent and appraise the property and see what the potential is to sell the property. And then use those funds as we see fit. Um, some examples would be looking at our IT and maintenance, um, needs for the future. Right now, we are using bond maintenance funds, and those are depleting very quickly. And with the cost of what it, it takes to do business these days, we don't feel like we have enough to be able to cover some of the critical needs that the district has. Uh, it also allows us to look at other property elsewhere where there's actual growth. And so if we have the opportunity to have those funds available, we can potentially negotiate something.
So like, you know, bond dollars could be spent one way, general fund the other way, whatever. So, um, one of the things we did do when the pandemic made us quickly figure out how to get to one-to-one devices, we were able to leverage some bond dollars that we had from the bond premium. So likely, those are the kinds of uses we could maybe use some of these for.
Yeah, that, that's right, Director Watson. Essentially, we, we trace back that this, uh, property was originally purchased with a bond in 2000. And as, as you're giving your examples, that bond covered things like facilities, tech infrastructure, you know, things of that nature. So we would use any funding, funding from this to, you know, uh, purchase things that fall within the same guidelines as the original bond. Or, as Saidah mentioned, it could also be used to purchase additional real estate.
Director Warren? And with that, in, in light of some of the conversation that we had in the Budget Committee meeting, um, I'd like the board to consider, or whoever needs to, uh, consider is doing some incremental, like we talked about, adding to the reserve fund, the general reserve, the general fund ending balance.
While we cannot, um, directly use the proceeds, the way we could approach that, Director Warren, is we could look at areas in the general fund that pay for those kinds of things that I just spoke about, and then purpose those dollars towards the reserve and then sort of use this to relieve, if you will, the general fund of those same kinds of categories.
And that's kind of how we did the tech device. Like the tech devices were in our general fund budget. When we realized we had bond surplus, now to do it immediately. Right. So, all right. See what you're saying.
And that may require us to come back potentially with a, a follow-up to the board. But that's, that's the process. We could follow up and do that.
Okay. Thank, thank you for enlightening me on that. Thank you.
If I could take you back to the, um, statement about the appraisal of the company, of the property. Saidah? Thank you. What I was wondering was, um, the land that we're having appraised, is that in an area of growth? Or is that in an area of no growth? And therefore, we think we, we could sell it? Because I know we're, we're experiencing an overall decline in population. So that, I was a little bit shocked to hear that there are some places where we are growing. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding where we're going and where we're not, if that makes sense to you.
The areas in Cornelius, and there's housing, right? There's housing coming up in Cornelius. The growth that was expected for us to have in that area, that land was, uh, is slated to be a high school. And there is no way we're going to be able to, uh, fill a high school for many, many, many years. We have, uh, capacity at our current high school. We are reserving 10 acres of the 41 acres for potential growth for an elementary school. But in order for a high school to get filled at that capacity, it would, it would take a long time. So we're going to hold back approximately, give or take, 10 acres. Um, the, what you have in your packet, uh, we took, uh, basically the design of Tamarack, which is similar to the last three schools we built, and we just overlaid it on that property. It's the optimal location for an elementary school. And then hopefully, some, someone else would like to purchase, uh, purchase the rest of the land.
Okay. That, that's very helpful. Um, my follow-up question then would be to, uh, our superintendent. Travis, what do we do? Because we have already had the declaration by that community, and they're, um, they really want a high school, and we know we can't do that. I'm presuming we've told them that, but now that we're going to revisit that land, have we had those conversations with their city government to advise them?
Yep. Scott and Saidah and I had a meeting with, uh, the city manager of Cornelius and walked the property and had this conversation with them. They're aware of what we're doing, and they're supportive of it.
Thank you.
And I, uh, I do think, good reminder that one of the board goals we had for this year was to reach out to our municipalities. And we met with North Plains. We met with Cornelius. We had the great meeting with the city last time. Uh, and I would, uh, I don't know if you remember, but this was one of the things that, I'm not saying causality or anything, but, uh, this was one of the discussion items that the leadership of Cornelius brought to us. The city manager, the city councilors, was that their urban growth boundary is locked, and this is really the only opportunity they have for expansion. And they were like, what are you going to do with it? And we may not have had an idea at that time that we were going to be here, but I, I think maybe them asking those kinds of questions might have been a catalyst for us to consider, what are we going to do with it? So I, I think it's a great idea that we are meeting with our municipalities on a regular basis, and I hope we continue to do that.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the surplus property resolution.
Second. It has been moved by Director Watson and seconded by Director Kim that the Board of Directors approve the surplus property resolution. Any further discussion? Now, Rose, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next agenda item is the 2024-2025 supplemental budget hearing and resolution for appropriations. Scott and Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to add?
We covered some of this chair upstairs. Um, I'll just remind, uh, the board that anytime we have appropriations adjustments of more than 10% between a major fund and functions, a supplemental budget is required, which is the case. Um, in addition, though, I think it also allows us to make some corrections to some fund balances as well as apply the use of the Internal Services Fund against the deficit that we discussed for this year. Those are the main drivers for the recommendation.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the 2024-25 supplemental budget resolution that includes revised appropriations for the purposes described by major fund and function.
Second. It has been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Warren that the Board of Directors approve the 2024-2025 supplemental budget resolution that include revised appropriations for the purpose described by major fund and function. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to say a public thank you to Jeff and Scott, uh, who did a lot of work. Um, this is an incredible time. It's an unprecedented time for us, and we deeply appreciate you allowing us to have a conversation and the discussion and for educating us. So thank you very much.
And I do agree with what you said upstairs and what sort of Christine said upstairs, that this is a function of transparency and kind of thing we should do more often.
Thank you. Rose, can we get a, can you call the roll, please?
Sheehan Kim.
Aye.
Erica Lopez.
Aye.
Patrick McGuire.
Aye.
Nancy Thomas.
Aye.
Monique Ward.
Aye.
Mark Watson.
Aye.
Yvette Pantoja.
Aye.
Motion carries. That concludes our agenda items and brings us to HCU HEA report. And then, one of them wants to go first, can you?
All right. Good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent Reiman, Cabinet members,
All right. Good evening, Board of Directors, Superintendent Ryman, Cabinet members, and student representatives. I'm Alicia Infante. I am the Political Action Chair on HCU Executive Board. And I'd like to start out tonight by recognizing the 13 incredible classified staff who have been nominated for the Washington County Chamber's 20th Annual Crystal Apple Awards. These awards celebrate excellence in education, and our classified staff exemplify just that. They are the steady hands and compassionate hearts who support our students and schools every day, often behind the scenes, but always making a difference. We are so proud of the work that they do, and we're thrilled to see them honored through these nominations. The nominees are Leana Thunderbird, Shadeneen Monzano, Corey Mesmer, Miriam Booze, Christine Jongin, Petra Purdy, Maria Martin, Gidget Chaloner, Rodolfo Fiera, Lillian Martinez, Carla Broca, Shelley Andrews, and Ricardo Lara Martinez. Congratulations to each one of these wonderful classified folks, and that you represent the very best of who we are. Amidst the recognition of our incredible staff, we must also face the sobering truth about the state of the education funding this year. Despite the appearance of the increased funding, the reality is that it still leaves us with deficits and forces our schools to make damaging cuts. We cannot afford to lower our expectations or settle for what continues to fall short of a true quality education model. This current proposed budget means fewer services, less support, and more pressure on already stretched staff. It feels disheartening, especially after we just spent over a year at the table collaborating and negotiating with the district to find solutions to the very real safety concerns for classified staff due to shortages and lack of resources. The current climate is one of uncertainty and fear, with shortfalls and instability threatening the very foundation of our schools. But why would we simply brace for impact and react to the blows that we know are coming? The mindset that we'll just do the best we can with whatever we get keeps us playing defense when we need to be building something better. We should be demanding bold systemic changes in how we operate, changes that create true stability and progress. The ongoing narrative is that there is no more funding to allocate to education, that what's allocated is all they can possibly squeeze, yet it's still not enough. This excuse is unacceptable. Education should be our top priority, and if the money isn't there, then it's not a question of if we find it, it's a question of how. And if it doesn't exist, then we create it, because our kids deserve nothing less. This is a moment for all of us, though, leaders, educators, families, and communities, to apply relentless pressure on those in power to fully fund public education. Accepting anything less is not just settling. That's exactly how systems stay broken, when we stop demanding better and choose complacency over outrage. Before I wrap up tonight, I want to take a moment to invite everyone to a crucial event in lieu of the funding situation that is happening tomorrow evening. Our two unions at HSD have come together to host some of our representatives in a town hall at 5:30 in the Hillsborough High School Gymnasium. And I urge you, each and every one of you, to please attend. This is an opportunity for us to show our representatives just how vital these issues are to us. Your presence will send a strong message, and our collective action will demonstrate that we refuse to accept the status quo. This is open to parents, community members, and other districts' employees. So if you need any information on how to RSVP to join us tomorrow, please speak to a union representative, find me, email the unions, reach out in any way so that we can get you the information. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Pantoja, Vice Chair Watson, fellow Board members, Superintendent Ryman, and administrative leaders. My name is Mary K. Babcock, and my pronouns are she/her, and I'm the proud president, and I'm honored to serve Hillsborough Education Association. Thank you to the Equity, Access, and Engagement Department for their dedicated efforts to support our students and families with your task force. Their work plays a vital role in ensuring that every student feels safe, valued, and supported in their school environment. I also want to say thank you to our Middle School Calendar Committee for their thoughtful work in evaluating what's best for our students. While the process has not yet resulted in a scheduled change, it provided valuable insight into priorities of both the members and our students. We look forward to continuing this work by exploring innovative scheduling models from across the country that may better meet the needs of our students. Thank you to the Evaluation Committee. I've been kind of busy this morning. So thank you to our Evaluation Committee for their ongoing work. They have reviewed the Oregon Department of Education's criteria, submitted thoughtful suggestions to streamline the evaluative process and meetings, and recently conducted a data dig to identify areas where educators can benefit from additional support. Our conversations have focused on how to strengthen instructional practice in ways that build educated confidence and give valuable feedback. A friendly reminder that elections matter. We're proud to share that HEA has endorsed the following candidates for our upcoming election, each of whom brings a valuable experience and strong commitment to public education. Yeska Hardine Mercado, Position 1, former HSD educator. Maureen Barnhart, Position 2, from HSD educator, former HSD educator, and former HEA president. Nancy Thomas, Position 3, and Katie Rhine, Position 6. The last day to register to vote is April 29, and ballots are due by May 20. Please make your voice count. Now, let's get real, and let's talk about state school funding and tonight's adopted budget. While I acknowledge the Governor's recommended $11.36 billion budget is the largest in Oregon's history for education, we must ask, how are we still facing cuts? We understand the pressures of a 6.5 increase in per, a 17% spike in liability insurance, declining enrollment, and rising operational costs. These compounding challenges are breaking public school districts across the state. This is not just an existing problem. But let's be clear, this is a cuts budget. To simply maintain current service levels, we must demand more funding. Our educators are already hanging on by a thread, doing everything they can to support our students, but we cannot afford to lose a single licensed or classified employee. OEA can send the map, and to truly fund pre-K-12 through higher ed, or, let me slow down, pre-K-12, we have estimated that we need a $12.3 billion ask for the funding. Higher education, we also represent community colleges with Oregon Education Association, and to do our pay parity with our part-time faculty, that they get paid very minimal compared to the full-time faculty. But to help our higher education, we're looking at an additional $1.1 billion. So that brings the total ask of $13.4 billion. In 2023, we went along with the Governor's proposed number, and when Portland Association of Teachers went on strike, we were told by legislators, we gave you what you asked for. I remember thinking to myself, never again. I will never settle for less than what it takes to fully fund our schools. I've had many conversations with HSD leadership about the continued support of the Governor's budget, and I cannot be silent, knowing that how these decisions will directly impact people's likelihoods and their families. HEA is committed to being changemakers. Tomorrow, we have a powerful opportunity, as Alicia mentioned earlier, to speak directly with our legislators at Hillsborough High School's gym and tell our stories, the real stories behind these numbers, stories that show why state funding must be a priority for our schools. Surrounding districts are already announcing the painful effects of these financial pressures, reductions in force, shortened school calendars, such as Reynolds School District, and more. This stops now. Our legislators and our Governor must invest in our schools because the future of Oregon is sitting in classrooms today. Finished. You haven't already signed up. We have QR code. We'd love for you guys to pass this along, and we'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you. This brings us to discussion time. We will start with our student reps. Cal, would you like to take the call?
All right. One thing I'd like to mention regarding the discussions of deficits upstairs. First off, I'd like to say that I greatly appreciate the transparency in the frank discussions that we had upstairs. They were very enlightening to someone who's coming onto this in a relatively short span of time. And while I do appreciate the transparency, I would like, I do understand that fewer educators within our buildings, or fewer supporting staff members, fewer staff members, will likely result in a smaller number of non-mandatory classes, meaning electives. And I greatly hope that we are able to receive more funding for our students, and able to support more faculty members, because with the shortening of electives, we are decreasing student autonomy, and we made one of the most impactful means for students to choose their own path. We can truly meet beyond the current service level. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I was also very grateful, the transparency that HSD is providing for everybody. I think it's, you know, it's a bittersweet thing, like where the position we are in now, but I am very grateful that, like, we have the ability to be transparent. I'm also very excited for the Crystal Apples Award, so that's gonna be really fun. And I can't wait to celebrate all of the teachers and the staff that have done so much hard work in our community.
So I'd like to just acknowledge again that I do believe that the state funding and number of funds that we are getting are not enough. I think that's something we all agree with. We have what to do the best, but at the same time, we do agree that that's definitely not enough, and we need to strive for more. I definitely see that in this board. When I've been here, I've sat at this table, and I've definitely appreciated it. There were many points upstairs where people were saying that we can't, we can't settle for this. This is what happens if we don't do good. That's a bad wording, but this is what happens if we can't advocate for ourselves, and we don't want that. And it is not finalized, and we will never know, because politics are confusing, and that's why this is all happening. I'd also like to say, I definitely feel a lot of appreciation for school faculty members and teachers alike, all classified individuals. I want to tell a personal story. This was over the weekend, I believe, 5:00 PM, and I was out in the field playing catch with my father, and we lost a ball under a fence, and that fence was a school building at Hillsborough School District. And so we went around, and it was, it was all locked up, right? But I'd like to share the story that two staff members at that building were willing to go through and help us retrieve our ball at 5:00 PM, and they were about to leave. They put in a lot of effort. I really, really want to appreciate, because it's a small thing, but I really wanted to share this, because it's incredible, our community. And I really, really do want to make sure people understand how incredible a community we have. Thank you.
Thank you, student representatives. Any words, Superintendent Ryman?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for sharing a personal story. It is a somber night when we prepare a budget presentation, and we have a cuts budget. And so I do want to appreciate Jeff and Scott and the Cabinet Group for all the work that you put into preparing the budget and the presentation tonight. I do want to appreciate the Budget Committee as well, and the Board for participating in the conversations and moving us along in our process. We feel like we have a responsibility to be truthful and transparent when, in good times and bad. And so I'm proud of the work that we're doing in order to get the facts in front of our community. I think it gives us a good platform to advocate for more funding from our legislature and relief from some of the expenses that we've experienced over the last couple of years. I also, on a brighter note, want to tell you a couple of great things that are happening in HSD just today. The flowers that you can take home and enjoy are from our youth summit that we hosted today. Our Equity, Access, and Engagement Team, Francesca and her squad, put together an event right here to help student leaders from our high schools come and find community, and a panel of community leaders to talk about what it is to unite and create a better community. So it was an incredible event, and the nice touches, like colorful tablecloths and flowers, made it feel like, to the students, I believe that they felt a home here at the Administration Center, which can feel scary, but it's their building. There are students. So thank you for that leadership conference today. Congresswoman Bonamici visited us and asked Chair Pantoja and Vice Chair Watson, and a few of our district leaders about the impacts of federal changes on public education in Hillsborough. And I want to appreciate the Congresswoman for her study and knowledge of what's happening in our schools, and for creating open lines of communication with us as leaders to take back to Washington and advocate for us. She's been an ally to us for a long time in HSD. We had a groundbreaking this morning of a Thorns and WNBA practice facility out here on Aleclac, and they invited our female student athletes to come and participate in basketball and soccer scrimmages with some of the athletes and the owners of the Thorns, and the group that's putting together the WNBA and Thorns Shared Facility in Aleclac. And I am hopeful that we'll find future partnerships with them coming out to the West Side and creating better sports facilities for our students and partners to use. We also had Black Hawk helicopters landing at Hill High and Glencoe to advertise the upcoming airshow. They had diverse pilots flying those helicopters, landing, and handing out tickets to the airshow, which is sponsor of our STEM activities, as well as our aerospace program at the airport, which are things you can't find in just any school district. With that, Happy Earth Day. Thank you for a good meeting tonight.
Thank you. Welcome to our Board, and we'll start off with Director McGuire online.
Thanks. It's, I want to first commend all the team, the whole team, Travis, and all the rest of the folks who contributed to that budget video. I think that's going to be really helpful for our community who don't, you know, spend the time reading budgets all year the way we do, but who want to know what's happening. So I think that just, that just struck me as a great, great success. I think people will really appreciate that. I also want to appreciate Yvette and Mark for representing our Board. I saw the photograph from our meetings with Representative Bonamici, and I thought that was great that both of you got to be there and share what's happening in our school district and how federal things affect us. Really appreciate that. So I think everyone is just doing great work representing our district, and it's much appreciated. And finally, I'll just say that, having just returned from some, out of town, I was really struck today with the beautiful springtime weather here in Hillsborough. It felt almost paradijsic. So I hope everyone gets a chance, whatever they're doing, to enjoy a bit of time outside in the spring and the season of renewal.
Thank you, Director McGuire. Director Lopez?
Not too much to share today. I just wanted to also make, talk about also that we have the HSD, Proud to be HSD Festival in a couple weeks, so, I'm looking at you, which is always really fun to be out in community. And it's also like, when the farmer's market comes back, back to what Ate was saying, how, what a really nice community you live in, and we get to have these really great moments of joy amidst all of the difficult news that we have to navigate. So I just wanted to make a plug for that event, and also, there's just a lot of different types of events that our district does to celebrate our diversity and celebrate the different cultures. And so I just wanted to mention we have our Asian Pacific Islander Proclamation today, and I know there's going to be a festival for that, and our Native Powwow. So there's just a lot of opportunities also to just see that vibrant community that we have and our kids, and all the ways that we support them. So I just wanted to make a plug to show up, and I think that's just another way for us to kind of have a little bit of light in these really dark moments, so, thank you.
Thank you, Director Lopez. Director Ward?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our audience members. Also want to echo what everyone else has said tonight, again, the Cabinet and Scott and Jeff for the work that you guys do on the budget. And I just want to encourage everyone, yeah, there's a lot of uncertainty. Everyone's really concerned about the funding and such, but just, we're nearing the end of the school year, and I would just encourage everyone to finish strong. Be positive and finish strong.
Thank you, Director Ward. Director Kim?
I also will just echo many of the Director's comments as well. Really appreciate the proposed budget. Thank you, Scott and Jeff, for the work that your team has put in, and even the mini sessions that we held leading up to this proposed budget being announced. And so just want to appreciate the team. And yeah, I hope everyone is able to enjoy some of the beautiful weather. Congratulations to the HCU Crystal Apple Award nominees. That's super exciting, and what a wonderful way to celebrate many of our unsung heroes. Thank you.
And Director Kim, Director Thomas?
Good evening to everyone. Just a few thoughts. I'll start with the positive. First of all, congratulations to anyone out there from Gruner Elementary School. I had the privilege, myself and Director, I just went blank on your name, oh my God. We had the pleasure of being there, accompanying Travis, and we were there for the 70th anniversary. It was incredible. I talked to people who were tender gardeners in 1949.
Wow.
It was, I mean, they shook my hand. I was like, oh! I was like, oh. I need you to understand, sometimes I'm expressing the emotion that was in the moment. If you could have been in the room to see the people and to see the depth and the breadth of the history and the emotion from this school that existed before this district, it was awesome. So to everybody that had anything to do with that celebration, it was phenomenal. I got a kick out of the fact that they didn't know who Travis or I was, and they asked Travis who he was, and he said he didn't know who he was. And then they looked at me, and I said, well, he works for me, but I don't know who he is either, and it was quite funny. But so we had a good time, so thank you. Thank you, thank you. Second of all, thank you to all the bus drivers on their day of appreciation. And thank you for allowing myself and a few of my good buddies to be there this morning at 6:00 AM to go, thank you, we love you. We had signs, and we just had a great time. It's something that you got to do. It makes you feel good. It fills up your cup. And so thank you very much for that. Congratulations and thank you to all HSD teachers and all the teachers across the country. The service of teachers is immeasurable. It's invaluable. And for me to say thank you to teachers is probably not enough, but it's, those are the only words I have right now. Many of you know that not only do I bend Mary Kay's ear, but I have a sister in the state of Georgia who doesn't have the privilege of being represented. And she can come into class with 40-plus high school income. And sometimes she actually has to walk out of the classroom and say, I need help. So someone sent a direct message to me and wanted to know, who do I consult with? And how do I know what teachers want? I would like to think that I have a very close cadre of people that I can depend on that tell me exactly what teachers want. And even though I'm not a teacher, it doesn't take a rocket science for me to figure, a scientist or science for me to figure out what we need. I just wish I had it again. So I just wanted to say that to you. Finally, I am looking forward to doing exactly what Mary Kay said. We're going to fight. Here's what we're going to do. First of all, we're showing up tomorrow night. Now, we're not on the list to speak, but that's okay, because we're board members, and we're going to be there, because we have to make sure that they see by the numbers that we do care, that we're being underfunded. And, well, I can't say what I was thinking about, but you know the difference when somebody's doing something on your boots and they're telling you that it's raining. That's what I will say. And that's where we are right now. So, yes, tomorrow night, Hills High, Hill Girl High School, at 5 o'clock. Be there, be square. But if you're not there, what I will tell you is, stop complaining. Be there, show up, and do something about it. And I want you to know that the next day, on Thursday, I've taken a day of vacation. I'm going down to Salem, and I'm not going to be nice. I will be with OSBA. I promise to be professional in all ways. But I can promise you that I will also be conveying to them the disappointment and my expectations for how they fund schools in this state. So if you want to know how to fight, that is what you have to do. You have to show up, and you've got to say something. And I don't know how I'm going to be received, but we will find out. But I wanted you all to know that this is not just taught. I am fully aware that everything we just gained through our collective bargaining agreements has now almost been lost. And that is, it's not even disheartening. That's not the word I want to use. And it's not your fault, and it's not our fault. But let's go talk to the people who do have it in their power to change it.
Thank you, Director Thomas. Director Watson?
Yeah, we read the proclamation before, but yes, today is Happy School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, so it was great to get a chance to thank some of them and yell Happy School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, and them go, that's today? It is, it's today. It's awesome, though. Be the one to bring that news. So that was a lot of fun this morning. Thank you for the opportunity to have a small group conversation with our federal representative Bonamici here. It's eight, we're able to be candid in that discussion, which is great. And one of the points I wanted to make sure she knew was that, well, couple, oftentimes when legislators are trying to tell a story, it's the emotion and the impact that lasts with people. She shared a couple of stories with us that definitely had that. And more often than not, a student voice brings that. So adults always try to be their best version of themselves when the students are in the room. One of the reasons we, for the last seven or eight years, we've tried to have students in the room, one of the reasons. So let her know that, you know, we are ready to share the stories from Hillsborough whenever she needs them, and that even though there's uncertainty with how things will be changing at the federal level, our district administrative team has shown the ability to be nimble and react quickly. So I doubt any changes in the upcoming short term will be that great, but I know I have all the confidence in our district leadership to do the best they can to be nimble and adjust to those. I didn't realize I was supposed to RSVP tomorrow, so I'm planning to be there, but I will now do the QR code thingy.
Wait, let the record reflect.
You did? All right, so I didn't realize you were supposed to, but all right, yes. Hopefully, Hill High can hold everybody that's going to come. And yeah, and congratulations to the HEA and HCU Crystal Apple nominees. One of my favorite events every single year, so looking forward to attending that this year and hope to see many of you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Watson. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to the student reps and to my fellow board members for all the work that you do and the time that you give to the board. And I also wanted to say thank you to the Cabinet team for all the work that you do and the continued work that you do. You guys are truly the esoteric group of HSD, and I learn from you every single day, and I am thankful for that. And I also wanted to take a moment to also appreciate Rose, because tomorrow is the Administrative Professionals Day. We wouldn't be able to do any of the work that we do without Rose. She does everything behind the scenes. I wouldn't be able to do anything without her, so thank you, Rose.
Thank you all very much for the sweet card. I appreciate you all. Thank you.